Okay, I'll call this regular council meeting to order for Monday, January the 24th. And they need additions or deletions to the agenda.
It's your worship, Mayor Berkeley, deletion of 5.1, it's a report from the RPAP, the Alberta Rural Health Professionals Action Plan, Alicia. The speaker is unable to attend, so we'll reschedule her at a later time.
Okay, thank you. Could I please have someone make a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
I'll make that motion, Mayor Berkeley.
Thank you, Councilor Maseris, all in favor. Thank you. And then we'll just go over the regular council meeting minutes of January the 10th. And when somebody's ready, we'll have a motion, please, to adopt those.
I'd still move, Mayor Berkeley.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Harrison, all in favor. Thank you. And then the minutes of the Agenda and Priorities meeting of January the 17th.
Mayor Berkeley, I'll move.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Dunham, all in favor. Thank you. Okay, we will move on to 4.1. So this is our public hearing. So I hereby declare the public hearing relating to bylaws 1470-75 and bylaw 1677-2021 open. The order of this public hearing shall be the introduction of the bylaw by administration. We will then call to hear from anyone in support of the bylaw and then from anyone who is opposed to the bylaw. So I'll invite Manager Gordon Shaw, please, to come up and do a presentation on this bylaw.
Mayor and Council, as a point of order, we've advertised the public hearing for 3:30. So you shouldn't have the public hearing actually before that time. Continue with other items on the agenda and then reconvene at at or after 3:30.
Um, Mayor Berkeley, to Gordon, so the recommendation is to to break or to adjourn because the mayor's already declared public hearing. So can you postpone or what's the proper word to go a little bit later? What is it?
Did you want to adjourn the public meeting then? And then we'll come back into it at 3:30?
You could table the public hearing until until 3:30 PM.
That'd be perfect.
Okay, so then I will pass for a motion, I guess, to close the public hearing at
At the table.
At the table till 3:30?
I'll make that motion to table until 3:30.
Thank you, Councilor Highstead, all in favor. Okay, thank you. Okay, so we will move on, I guess, then to 5.2 and the CAO report by CEO Becker.
Thank you, Mayor Berkeley. During the January 17th AMP meeting, Council heard from a delegation from the the Alberta Regional Rail Incorporated. So Council heard of some of their vision regarding a rail system of serving off the main corridor between Calgary and Edmonton. Although at the meeting, we didn't hear clearly that they're seeking a letter of support is clear prior to the meeting and then after the meeting and follow up that they are seeking a letter of support from Town Council. If Council has been following some of their engagements, they've been going out to other municipal councils, asking the same same request to a letter of support. So administration will be looking for direction if you wish to proceed in providing a letter of support. As for the information provided to you, Alberta Regional Rail Inc. also provided a template for council consideration to help in potential wording of a letter if you choose to provide a letter of support. Other than that, Mayor and Council, just business as usual, business engagements recently last week, as well as staffer continuing to discuss the health and safety audits, which you're going to get more detail in a future meeting on some of the the winds and a few areas of focus regarding our health and safety program. Also that the town supervisors and managers meet quarterly. So we go through different agenda items and you can see that my most recent meeting, we had talked about the health and safety audits, went over in more detail the 2022 budgets and starting to get supervisors, managers ready, following council's strat plan sessions on getting to build out tactical plans or action plans associated with your with your priorities. And just a few other items there, council for your consideration. If there's any questions regarding this report or anything else regarding town operations, administration will be happy to answer your questions. That's my report.
Right, thank you, CEO Becker. Anyone have any questions for CEO, Councilor Harrison?
Thank you, Mayor Berkeley. Through to administration, we've achieved our C of R certificate of recognition. And I know there was a lot of work put into that. That's a that's a big event in any organizational sort of structure. Is are there plans to go out to our community for just a short little snippet of what a C of R is? And the work that's went into it, because like I say, there's there's been a lot from your staff, and I think our community needs to know that we're on top of health and safety for our our staff and contractors and anyone that's employed by by our by our town. So just just a comment, I don't know, maybe you've already thought about it, Director Kennedy, but I really think that it's it's something we're worthy of celebrating. Thank you.
Mayor Berkeley, over to Councilor Harrison. I think once administration comes back to you and give you some of those the details of the of the audit and the results, I think that could lead into a little bit of information going out to the public to acknowledgement of the work and dedication to being a health safe work environment.
Thank you, Councilor Harrison, good points. Anyone else? Anyone like to make any comments or discussion around the rail presentation, Councilor Highstead?
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. I thought the the presentation was was well done. But I think there was lots of questions that we we still do have with a letter of support. I know that a couple other communities have jumped on board right away, but I think my understanding, just listening to our council, is that there is an opportunity for us to get additional information before we commit. And and that's where I'm still sitting on it because I think the project's really cool, but I think there's when you're you're throwing something to, you know, it's going to cost millions and millions of dollars. And not knowing the rail safety or the tracks well enough, you know, we can have people explain what what may or may not be happening on those lines. I think it would help us to have that additional information. So that's where I'm still sitting. I wasn't too sure where everybody else was.
Okay, thank you for those comments. Councilor Bates.
Yep, yes, I kind of echo that. And the one question that came to me was, we interact frequently with CP. And I'd be curious to know what they must have an opinion on some of this. And I'd be curious to know what their what their feelings are. And and then if we were to I didn't didn't feel some of the questions that I asked were answered adequately about the logistics. And if we were to provide a letter of support, I guess I'm a little concerned that if we if we just provide letters of support without some degree of of what we're sure of, we're supporting, then our opinions down the road are maybe diluted. And so I would like to see something in the letter, if we do go ahead, saying that they need to come up with credible and agreed upon logistics of how they would use the track with CP and that sort of thing. So yeah, I still have reservations about an unrestricted letter of support. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Bates, Councilor Wing.
I think just to echo my colleague, Councilor Bates, I'm a little uncomfortable about a letter without context around specifically who it's being sent to in this case. So I mean, I don't think it's unreasonable to ask them to stay in touch with us and as their plans become a little more solid, just talking about approaching private finance financial institutions. I think then we should have the ability to say yes or no, we'll provide that letter. Thank you.
Councilor Maseris.
Thank you, Mayor Berkeley. I also echo my colleague's point of view. I felt that there were some pieces of information on there, some inequitable comparables and some other things I wouldn't mind having a chance to discuss with council, some of the questions that we might want to put forward.
Thank you. Yeah, just so council knows, I did attend a South Central Mayor's meeting last week, and this discussion came up because, of course, they have done some other presentations in the area. Some people have jumped on board and some have not. And I this subject will be part of that group's discussion going forward as well. I also heard representative from Alberta Regional Rail in an interview, I think it was on Friday afternoon, and and they were talking about that they would need to lay tracks down for the service to to even get underway. So there would be a whole new set of tracks parallel with the existing track. So it seemed like that's that's a lot, right, of work ahead. And I also would like to have discussions with CP. I know a couple of months ago, CEO Becker and both and myself, we both reached out to CP, hoping to have their representative come into council and do a presentation too. So I think for now, with that discussion, we'll just leave this and we'll gather more information as his time goes on and and go from there, if that's okay. Any other questions for CEO Becker? If not, I'll have someone make a motion to accept this report as information, please.
I'll move that to Mayor Berkeley.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Bates, all in favor. Thank you. And then we'll also have an emergency coordination center verbal update as well.
Thank you, Mayor Berkeley. Just to be brief, administration is continuing just to be aware, really, right now of what the province is doing in the Chief Medical Officer and what they're saying. And and basically from there is we're meeting weekly and just understanding what's going on internally and making sure staffing capacity does not become an issue. Currently, all town services that we provide are are being served. There's there's no major impact on our organization currently. So again, just to be aware and making sure we don't have anything come at us unexpectedly.
Thank you. Any questions? No, please have someone make a motion to accept the report as information.
Mayor Berkeley, so move.
Thank you, Councilor Dunham, all in favor. And we will move on to 5.4, request for decision on media and communications training from CEO Becker.
Great, thank you. Council reviewed the media and communications training proposals, the proposal details during the encounter portion of the January 17th AMP meeting. As you can see within this report, administration did send out seeking proposals from three qualified proponents of the three we received two as per the report. And one was received by Grant Ainsley. The other was Shauna Randolph Communications, as per the report. According to the year request for proposal scope, which he approved in mid-December, the prior to budget, the objectives of the learnings are outlined there for your reference. From the review and from what council would have reviewed as well last week is that of the two submissions, both proponents are well qualified to serve you with their experience and and so forth. And as well as during the 2022 budget, council approved $5,000 for media and communications training. As per the proponent of Shauna Randolph Communications, there's ability to, if you council decide to move towards moving into contract with Shauna Randolph, then the the budget for the training would be a combination of both council budget of $5,000 and then supporting administration training would be from the administration budget. I'll leave it there for any questions, council, and taking your direction.
Okay, thank you. If someone prepared to make a motion with the media training. Councilor Highstead.
I'll make the the motion that council approved the contract award to Shauna Randolph Communications for Media and Communications Training in the amount of $6,615 plus travel and accommodation, accommodation in downtown Innesville.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion around that? Councilor Dunham.
Mayor Berkeley, I'd just like to say that I'm very pleased that we've ended up going with this one. I think the the depth to the training that we're going to receive will serve us all very well, as well as the community.
Thank you for those comments. Anything else, Councilor Bates?
I think the last component of Councilor Highstead's motion is important. I would support that, that the accommodation be in Innesville. And I guess I have a question to administration. Do you have an estimate of the accommodation expenses? Because when we normally have that in a motion approving expenditure that
Mayor Berkeley, Councilor Bates, no, not necessarily. We would have that detailed budget within your consulting type of contract awards.
Okay. Yeah, I had one other question, and that was in the RFP. There was a reading scheduled developed. Item five. Did we actually score though, two different?
Mayor Berkeley, Councilor Bates, there was a scoring conducted. I don't have that detail here, but Shanna Randolph did score higher with the administrative evaluation.
Thank you.
Anything else? Councilor Wing?
Thank you, Mayor Berkeley. Just a question to Councilor Highstead. Can we make a friendly amendment and include that the budget or the total cost will be shared with administration? So council's budget is only impacted by $5,000?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Is that?
Is that okay? Thank you. That way we won't lose it.
For clarity, our motion would read then for toward contract as per for total cost of 6615 plus additional to be funded from council budget of $5,000 in the balance, whatever that number is, to be funded from from administration.
Councilor Highstead.
I'll make that amendment. How's that?
Yep, perfect. Thank you. All right, all in favor? Okay, carry unanimously. Thank you. And next up, we'll have a look at the council action control. Any questions about this? Okay, please have someone make a motion to accept this as information.
I'd still move, Mayor Berkeley.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Harrison, all in favor. I guess we'll keep going then because it's not quite 3:30 yet. So I'll go on to 7.1, request for decision on the flag policy presented by Director Vickers.
Thank you, Mayor Berkeley. So back in November, it was requested by council to bring back forth some research regarding flags. So we have done that and have brought it here for you to review today. So the purpose here is to ensure all flags at town of Innesville sites are displayed in a respectful, consistent and appropriate manner with practices consistent with accepted guidelines and standards and aligned with Heritage Canada and the government of Alberta. So the town of Innesville operates within the scope of the Municipal Government Act. Tools such as policies, procedures and bylaws are how the town translates legislation into clear direction. So during the November 1st Agenda and Priorities Committee meeting, council directed administration to research flag policies and present back to council. And we have drafted flag policy 2022-03 for consideration of council. And this flag policy will direct administration when dealing with a request for a different flag to be raised as as well as when a half mast is required. So I'll take any questions you may have at this time.
Any questions for Director Vickers?
Mayor Berkeley, through to Director Vickers. Just got a question about 6A, the town may not normally fly flags, which may be considered controversial or divisive. And I'm just wondering about that particular wording and whether we can create some more clarity around that.
Sure. I guess when a request comes in from like a third party, I guess. If it's from, I don't even know what would be a good example, from an organization that maybe would be considered a group that the federal government or the provincial government has considered. Yeah, I don't know what the right word is, then we would generally not even consider to raise that flag on their behalf. I don't know, we could, I don't even know if a list would be appropriate of different types that we wouldn't raise, or if it's just if they come in, we would decide at that moment.
Yeah, and I would think, I mean, if it's a huge issue, maybe you would bring it to council to to make a decision ultimately. So it's kind of taken off administration's hands.
Right, Mayor Berkeley. So in in the policy, it does indicate that the CAO doesn't does decide. And then we'll bring it to council when when appropriate.
Yeah. Does that answer your question, Councilor Maseris?
I think so, because you're saying that that wording is attached behind the scenes to to something else. So it wouldn't be a matter of it's not an opinion piece is is what I'm kind of getting at.
It could be, but it would be like that there are certain organizations that would be considered terrorist organizations, right? That even if they came and requested, we flew their flag for them, it would be a no, right? Simply based on that. If there was something where CEO Becker thought maybe it could with a waffle, or it could be bad, but maybe it's okay, then he would likely bring it to council for for further direction from from yourselves.
Okay, thank you. I guess my worry is that at some point, if there's a different council up here, that those words might be taken in a different way. And I just want to make sure that that there's clarity around that so that we establish a policy that lays that out. Yeah.
Those are good points. Councilor Bates?
Yeah, basically, listening to that, I share that concern that you might need to put a couple of words in there, be considered by who. Because we have had, you know, we've all had information from citizens very recently that they considered certain things in a certain way on an individual basis. So they could say, who gets to make that decision when?
I guess according to this policy, it would be
Through the CAO.
That would make that decision.
Yeah, so I guess. So that's as a sub. Could you point where that is? I just was following Councilor Maseris' concern.
Mayor Berkeley, this creates concern for council, you could traditionally have the three flags, Innesville Province and Canadian Flag. So you could state anything different than that, council approves it. So anything, so only this year that we had a couple of requests for for a different flag, which is council approved both of those. So if you want to have that influence on what's going on our flag poles, it could easily be done just through bringing that to you directly instead of putting it onto me to to make that decision or the CAO, sorry.
Councilor Wing?
Thank you, Mayor Berkeley. Yeah, I agree. Actually, the word the word in that one sentence, 6A, that puts all of this uncertainty in action is the word normally. We don't ever fly flags that are controversial or whatever divisive. But but then it becomes sort of subjective as far as how do we define that and whatever. So I would agree with, I would appreciate your suggestion, CEO Becker, thank you for that.
Councilor Dunham.
Mayor Berkeley, I also, I don't want this to be downloaded onto CEO Becker. I much prefer that it be the council that as a body makes that decision. Why why allow it just to land on your shoulders where we're here? And that's should be part of our recognition and understanding in what qualifies is that. And I mean, some people may ask what qualifies us to make those decisions, but I think that there's some probably something within the Alberta government or federal government that we can look into that would qualify what organizations are considered divisive or or controversial. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Dunham. I wonder if we should just maybe leave this for the time being and bring it back another day and maybe do some research as per Councilor Dunham's request. Maybe there are other policies out there that deal with this. CEO Becker, yeah?
Yeah, I believe that's the makeup of this policy is that was referring to other policies. Our referral is the government of Alberta and Heritage Canada. That's who we take. This is where the policy comes from. So we follow their their guidance on on any half masting and full mast. The only thing that really comes, I think, is I would recommend, council, if you would consider under 21 is maintain the CAO to manage the the flag raises in half mast. That's what's happening right now. That's that's based on of significance. There's some there is some judgment in there. But I guess through Director Vickers, following the government of Alberta and the Heritage Canada, we have that direct, the directives right there, more so than what we're doing right now. Right now, it's been subjective to me. But now we will be moving those flags up and down based on those entities. The one that really sticks to me is for the comments I hear is something that is not the traditional flags should be approved by council. I suggest just changing that wording to reflect flags that being requested of town to flown on our polls to be council consideration discretion.
I'm wondering if we could even remove 6A out of there because divisive is very subjective, right? What's divisive for some may not be divisive for others. And it opens up potential for for controversy, which is
On the other hand, Mayor Berkeley, it gives you that ability to to determine what is that. So so right now, without a wording like that, there's you know, there is no guidance on what should go up, but should not be included. So there's kind of a both sides of that, I guess you could speak to.
Any further comments, Councilor Wing?
Just, I'm not quite on that note, but just to add the, I think, an advantage of having the decision around the flag coming to council for special flags, then is it also triggers the opportunity for council to recognize a special event or a special activity that would warrant having the flag go up. So there could be other recognition that comes from council as a result of that awareness. I would be afraid that we would miss something otherwise. Yeah, I'm not. I think I think I agree with CEO Becker. I think we should leave something in there that says, stop if it looks like this. Or take a second look if it looks like this.
Another, sorry to interfere with your deliberation, but you can even put wording that council has discretion to decide the appropriate flag. I know we have that in other wording. It's ultimately your control. Just like our RFPs, we have the right to say we don't have to issue our RFPs. You have a right to say, no, it doesn't matter if it's controversial or not, but the wording could be more general. That council has the right and the authority to to permit flags being flown on on the flag poles.
Yeah, I just want to ensure that people are aware that some of this may be to do with timeliness. So if we have a policy and it's in the hands of the CEO, if you know, we're in a five Monday month. So if we have a policy and it's in the hands of the C E O, if, you know, we're, you know, five Monday months and last council meeting is a fourth Monday, and then we're not meeting again until the second Monday of the following month. There can be, you know, three week break basically between council meetings. And if somebody is waiting to see if they can fly their flag in that point in time, it it could be held up a little bit, but I I'm just not sure that B doesn't really cover what A is saying. They don't kind of, yeah.
Sorry, I hijack your report of it.
Yeah, 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 sorry, sorry, Director Vickers. No, it's flight policy is good. I'm not, yeah, I'm just kind of, I I I think what Councilor Maser said concerns me, right? Because you get different groups of people around the table, or you, you know, you you leave the subjectivity up to a community that's going to be saying all this is divisive. Had a recent letter saying that a certain event was divisive. I I don't think any of us here agreed that it was. So there there you've got that controversy going and Councilor High Stans.
Is this a motion to table like so that we come back with the wording so that we're not wordsmithing it? I know that we're in debate. I think that's okay. That's great. But I just, you know, I'm just try, I'm not trying to be pushy. I'm just saying that I think there's a little more work that we can do on it and maybe provide clarity that way.
House Director Vickers, yeah. Probably put a lot of time in already.
I can take it back and and make a few changes and bring it back to you at a later date. And just to be clear, what exactly are we wanting to have changed? We want
I believe it's the A, the A, right? We're we're either, I don't know whether delete that or change the wording or merge it with B somehow, the Council Dunham.
Mayor Barkley, I personally, looking at B, to me, that encompasses sort of what our discussion has been. The town will not fly a flag of an organization whose undertaking or philosophy expels its violence, hatred, racism, or contrariety tone. Sorry, bylaws or policies. So to me, that even supersedes the first one, clause A, because we're saying we will not. So to me, I I personally don't see need for, I'm very, I'm very comfortable with B because I think it's any organization or group, it's fairly easy to figure out what their mandate is or what they stand for. And if it qualifies under under B there currently.
Are you comfortable with that, Director Vickers?
To remove A? I'm comfortable with it. It would be up to you.
Yeah, I'm just wondering like the the purpose of of A, like what 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 distinguishes A from B, I guess.
I I think that where Counselor Dunham is coming out is you could strike out A. Then the wording, it would go, B would become A, sees B all the way down to G is F.
Is that the only change?
Council Bates?
So the one other thing I think I heard in the debate though was that that if there was any unsurety by the C A O that he would get that from council.
Yeah, and that that is, that is in here already.
Okay, so if if you're satisfied with this, then I would have someone make a motion that we approve flag policy twenty twenty-two zero zero three. But we're removing A, six A, deleting six A.
I'd like to make that motion, Mayor Barkley.
Thank you, Councilor Maser. Any further discussion? It's okay, all in favor then? Thank you. Manager Shaw, would you like to proceed with the public hearing now? Okay. Okay, so I will hereby declare the public hearing relating to bylaws fourteen seventy dash A seventy-five and sixteen seventy-seven dash twenty twenty-one now open. And the order of this public hearing will be the introduction of the bylaw from administration, and then we will call to hear from anyone who is in support of the bylaw. And then we'll call to hear anyone who is opposed to the bylaw. So welcome, Manager Shaw, and let you go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So council previously gave first reading to bylaw number sixteen seventy-seven dash twenty twenty-one and to bylaw number fourteen seventy dash A seventy-five at its December thirteenth twenty twenty-one regular council meeting and set today, January twenty-fourth as a public hearing date. Now, the property owner of thirty-nine fifty-two forty-ninth Avenue Lot Eight Block A Plan eighteen eighty-nine R S applied to amend the municipal development plan and the land use bylaw for this particular property. The intent of the amendments would be to change the property from a residential use to a commercial one. Both of these bylaws were advertised in accordance with sections two oh seven and six oh six of the Municipal Government Act as well as regulations contained within section two point two zero amending the land use bylaw fourteen seventy being the land use bylaw. It was also advertised in the January fourth, January eleventh, and January nineteenth twenty twenty-two edition of the Alburton. And it was also posted on our website. Property owners within sixty meters of the subject property were notified by regular mail as well. The applicant is in attendance for this public hearing. With respect to the public hearing, council must hear any person, group of persons or person representing them who claims to be affected by the proposed bylaw and who has complied with the procedures outlined by the bylaw. And as well, council may hear any other person who wishes to make representations and whom council agrees to to hear. After considering the representations made during the public hearing, council may A either pass the bylaw, B make an amendment to the bylaw it considers necessary and proceed to pass it without any further advertisement or hearing, or C defeat the bylaw. Administration supports this proposed, these proposed bylaws. We believe that this will facilitate the future potential sale of this property compared to what it is currently designated and zoned as. If council recalls, a few years ago, there was similar type of application that changed it from commercial to residential. And now the owner wishes to be able to change it back to commercial from residential. The cost to try to renovate the building from a a commercial use to a residential use is rather prohibitive. And the owner has determined that it would be in their best interest if they look at changing it back to commercial. And so this concludes administration's report to council for the the public hearing session. I'd be happy to take any questions that council may may have. But we deem this to be a a pretty straightforward type of application and also bylaws.
Thank you. So I will ask if there's anyone here who supports the bylaw and if they wish to speak. Did you want to say anything about it or? Could you, I'll just have you come up, please, where Mr. Manager Shaw is sitting and just state your name and and just make your comments, please.
I'm Ravinder Sidhu. I'm the owner of the property. So I would like to convert it back to commercial, so it's easier to sell the property.
Okay, thank you. That's all, thank you. Anyone else that would like to come forward in support of the bylaw? Okay, well, then I will ask if if there's anyone who opposes the bylaw, if they would like to come forward and and say something. Okay, please come up and state your name and the reasons why you're opposed. Okay, no, that's fine, sure.
The way it is shown there, it's rezoning onto the road. The road's not going to be affected, right? It's still going to be a through road. Then I'm okay with it. Thank you.
Manager Shaw. I'm sorry. Can we just get your name, please? Sorry. Okay, thank you, Susan.
Yes, Mayor and Council. Our land use bylaw basically takes a district or zoning or designation to the middle of the street. What we will likely do in in future proceedings is we'll just shade in the actual property as opposed to including the street. It's a standard type of planning type of procedure to to basically cover off what the district or the designation would be. So that's why you see it showing part of the street being shaded as well. But like I say, in the future, what we'll do is is simply do the property itself, so it's less confusing for the general public.
All right, thank you very much. Are any comments from council? Okay, if not, then I will accept a motion, please, to close the public hearing.
Mayor Barkley, I would move that we close the public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Wing, all in favor. Thank you. And I think we'll just proceed with the motions while we're we're here now and so we we have four motions to take a look at. And if you're comfortable, I would like somebody to please read out the the first motion.
Mayor Barkley, I move that council give second reading, subject to the input received during the public hearing on bylaw number one six seven seven dash two zero two one being a bylaw to amend the municipal development plan for property legally described as Lot Eight Block A Plan one eight eight nine R S and civically described as three nine five two forty-ninth Avenue from residential to commercial.
Thank you, Counselor Harrison. Any discussion, all in favor? Okay, and then we'll have the next motion, please, for third reading. I'm sorry, Counsel Bates.
Mayor Barkley, I'll I'll move that we give third reading to bylaw sixteen seventy-seven dash twenty twenty-one as previously read.
Any discussion, all in favor? Thank you. And I'll have someone give second reading to the next bylaw fourteen seventy dash A seventy-five, please.
I move that council gives second reading, subject to the input received during the public hearing on bylaw number fourteen seventy dash A seventy-five to amend the land use bylaw for property legally described as Lot Eight Block A Plan one eight eight nine R S and civically described as thirty-nine fifty-two fortieth Avenue from D C D Direct Control District to H W Y dash C Highway Commercial District.
All right, thank you. Discussion, all in favor? Okay, and then I will just have someone, please, give third reading, Counselor Maser.
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. I move that council gives third reading on bylaw number fourteen seventy dash A seventy-five being a bylaw to amend the land use bylaw for property legally described as Lot Eight Block A Plan one eight eight nine R S and civically described as thirty-nine fifty-two fortieth Avenue from D C D Direct Control District to H W Y dash C Highway Commercial District.
Okay, thank you, and all in favor. Great, okay, thank you. Okay, we will move back to seven point two request for decision on post-secondary scholarship policy from Director Vickers, please.
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. So during the twenty twenty-two budget deliberations of request was put in to put in a sort of scholarship fund for students of Innisville. So that did get passed on December thirteenth. And there was twenty-five hundred dollars included. So the town of Innisville recognizes the importance and value of education and continued learning. So in this spirit, we've created the town's post-secondary scholarship policy. It would be awarded annually to encourage and support our local students to pursue pursue further educational opportunities. This award would honor the achievements of students who are entering their first year of full-time post-secondary study at college, university, or equivalent. So I will take any questions you may have.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions about this, Counsel Wing?
Yes, Mayor Barkley, thank you, through to Director Vickers. Thank you, Director Vickers, for your work on this. This is, I'm grateful that Counselor Harrison brought this up to begin with, and I'm really excited. Just a couple of ideas or considerations that I would provide provide for you. I would like to can have us consider that we are specific by adding one area of study into this award. And that is, to be clear, around this being a full-time, well, we need, yeah, full-time or first year of full-time post-secondary study for college, university, but also inclusive of trades training. So our posts are our trades apprentices. Now, when they do their their in-school time, they they actually go to a college or a or a polytechnic to do their training. They're actually captured. Once they get into those institutions, they can sit as a student representative on the Board of Governors. They can participate on a college or an institutional athletics team. They officially become a part of the alumni of the institution. So I think that I think it's to our benefit to be specific to say you can be an academic student, but you can also be a trade student as well. So I would like us to include that. And then just moving into the procedures piece of it. I have a question for you regarding eligibility, the very first point, you talk about the Innisville Board of Education School. And I'm not sure, I think we need to be more specific. So typically, we have our our own high school here, which is Ashenox Edge School Division High School. We have a number of students that travel into both Redger Catholic and Redger Public High Schools because of sports programs, other academic programs. So I I think I think the intention is if the family's been paying taxes and living in in Innisville, that wherever their child goes to high school, I think is where we want that has gone to high school, then I'm not sure.
So the intent is that they've gone to school here in Innisville, whether that's the high school or the career high as well.
So the no, the kids that go to Notre Dame who come out of Saint Marguerite's wouldn't qualify?
Under what it currently says.
Okay, so I think we should talk about that.
Yep, for sure.
And then, as I said, some students who've come out of the middle school here go to Redger Public High Schools because of baseball academies and other things. So their families still live here. They still live here, but so I wanted to clarify that with you. And then just one other thing, and then I'll, then we can, then I I'm worried about our timelines. So July the thirty-first. Most post-secondary is now asked for tuition to be paid by the middle of August. So I'm wondering if we can back that up so that we would have decisions made by the end of June, and then hopefully that disbursement process would get the money to them a little bit sooner.
We did actually discuss the timelines. However, they may not know if they've actually graduated high school if we push it up too early.
So then maybe July the fifteenth. Like they would know by that time for sure.
Yeah, we can.
If that, yeah, I would, I would, I'd, like I said, that tuition is due now six to eight weeks earlier than it used to be. So, yeah, if we can bump that back a little bit, or bump that up a little bit, that would be great.
And and could I just make one mention, Mayor Barkley? So under the eligibility, it does indicate that they just have to prove they've been accepted to a trade diploma or degree program. So it does indicate trade as well in there. So I don't think, I think that.
So then if we can just add that into anything that where where somebody goes for information about the policy, if we're clear about that, that's good.
Yeah, of course.
Counselor Bates?
Yeah, I I can agree with this, but this is the first time we've had a chance to even discuss it. And I'm wondering, do we want to make that decision like? So we were talking about three scholarships or awards, bursaries. One and two being a thousand and three being five hundred, and then all the criteria is the same. Like, I'm just wondering if we shouldn't spend a little more time and separate some of this and and have some of it. At least the the discussion, that we have a discussion that it might be designated more. And and then you have to look at all those dates and that. And and then you have to look at all those dates and that sort of thing, having been the involved anniversary that we do as a family. Those things sneak up on you awful fast. And then you get a you get the problem of, let's say, you've got six applications. Somebody has to go through those and make those decisions. And they're not always easy. In our case, we have the benefit of a foundation that makes recommendations to us. And then we have to give it the final approval. But you'd be amazed how fast these things come at you. And and then, like you say, making those decisions independently. Because you may know some of the students, or you may know the parents of a student, or and who is that? Like, are we going to involve the community standing committee or something? Like, I'm just throwing a whole lot of questions out there that that you might want to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bates. I appreciate that. And I certainly appreciate all the work that Director Vickers has done in this as well. And I'm a little concerned about the different amounts. And I know it's twenty five hundred dollars. So you know, how how we divide that up. But I think around the criteria as well, it's you know, if we could tighten that up a little bit where there's a scoring system, whether we're you know, putting more scope points on volunteerism in the community or whatever it might be. But yeah, I've been involved as an organization. We we would do scholarships at the schools too. And it it's not easy. Sometimes you're oversubscribed. Sometimes you're undersubscribed. And yeah, I kind of agree with Counselor Bates of I don't know whether we need to have that discussion with with counsel here or want to kind of take it back to administration and let Director Vickers kind of maybe tighten up some of that or and and the amounts as well. Like, do we want to do five, five hundreds? Do we want to do? You know, where it's even or three, seven fifties? I know that doesn't come to twenty five hundred, but it's a it's an odd amount to divide. So.
I was just going to suggest doing five at five hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah, your worship, I would agree. Maybe taking it back for just a review and and a rebound. And I do agree. I appreciate the comments that Counselor Wing had talked about, you know, mentioning or trades, which is in there. I think it's really important that we promote that as a community, but also with the the students on a personal level and and some and good governance is, you know, I'm not going to get personal, but I I see a lot of kids that do go leave Innisfell for grade ten, eleven, twelve, or it could be their last year of high school that, like Counselor Wing was expressing is, you know, going to school for sports or arts and those things. So I think it'd be important to make sure that they're included. Thanks.
Mayor Barkley?
Yes.
Thank you. I wonder if it would be worthwhile for council to have a discussion about what do we value behind the achievements? And help with help setting up the criteria that way. I'm sorry, one more thing. I think that having that criteria is so important because we will probably be called to explain. And it's difficult to explain to somebody why they haven't received it. And having something kind of objective that we go by would be helpful.
Thank you, Counselor Mares. I'm also wondering, Director Vickers, if there would be some dialogue with the the schools to, you know, kind of find out maybe what's in place already. And if we supplement it maybe in a different area, that
What do you mean in a different area?
Well, I don't know. Let's say there's a bunch of scholarships. It's for academics. It's for sports, but there's nothing for. I don't know. You've got a a great young person in the community who's doing a lot of volunteering and but, you know, maybe they're not academically the at the top of the list, or they're not at the top of list in sports achievements. And yet, you know, they're 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 going to to move on to post secondary something or other and and do a great job. And, you know, quite often you know, they're not recognized, I guess, and for for that kind of thing. I just so volunteerism out as as an example, it doesn't need to be that. But, you know, maybe getting away from from what scholarships are quite often presented for.
Would you like specific scholarships potentially? Like, would you like one for excelling at sports and one for excelling at academics and one for volunteering? Or do you want to be able to make that choice when they come in based on?
I don't know. Would you be able to maybe speak with someone at the school about that? And maybe there's some insight that that they would have and I don't know. What what do people think, Counselor Bates?
Well, we're kind of getting into the discussion.
Yeah, we are.
And you do need to know some of those things. I think it would be nice to know what are all the scholarships that are out there right now. There are probably, I don't know if there's twenty or if there's three, like
There's tons.
Hundreds, whatever. It'd be nice to know what they are, because we might be able to fill a gap somewhere. And and that might influence whether we go five, fives, or or, you know, we don't have to spend twenty five hundred. It could be. You know, you can make a combination, something significant, three sevens, whatever, three eights, five, fives. But if we know what is out there, they must have a list. Kids must be able to go to a to one reference and say, what can I apply for? And and then we could create what components, how much? Because, yeah, everybody ours has a component of volunteerism. It's such a good thing. Who wouldn't? But maybe there's something that's being ignored. Maybe there could be something that I don't know, builds on person's desire to become a students' union president or something that shows governance, or I don't know, you can just it's limitless what you can do. But it would be kind of nice to know what's there. That's that's the feeling I have. And then you do need to really decide and have a a framework for how the award is going to come down. Because you will get all those other things coming at you of of how many people and as come as Mayor Barkley has said, there will be a year when you have it way oversubscribed and you have it way undersubscribed. And you have to deal with those. You have to kind of anticipate some of those things. And I'm not sure that we can do it today, but we can. And and maybe what we do is revisit this now that all of our minds have been stimulated, and we come back and say, here's some more ideas. And put it, if we want to do it this year, you're going to have to have a deadline when you get this thing sorted out, because if you need to probably be letting the kids apply by no later than the end of March, I would think.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Bates. Yeah, I'd love to reach the the kids that may not otherwise be reached somehow. But sorry, Counselor Dunham.
Mayor Barkley. I, yeah, I would like to look into this a little further, because having applied for scholarships and having helped my nephew apply for a few is that he had needed to know what he was specifically, what he was applying for. He's a sports guy. He's very academically. He's achieved a lot, but there were specifics that they were asking within the criteria of what scholarships he was applying for, as well as supporting documentation. So if we just kind of have it out there that we're, we just have these scholarships, but without any definition behind them, I think, you know, for us to to be able to get it more granular right from the start, to have students allow them to write their applications to it, that if we have more information as as to what it is, would help a lot.
Counselor Harrison?
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. I I'd just like to echo everything that's been said here. There's no sense regurgitating it. I'd like to thank Erica and her group for putting this together. I think it's very important. And yes, to my colleagues, we need to go back and sort of frame it up a little bit more. And and I'd like the ID from idea from Mayor Barkley that there are kids out there that aren't sports guys. They're not academically the brightest in the class. But yet they want to go on and life that, you know, go to a post secondary. And there are courses. And there's career paths that they that they can attend, and we can't lose sight of that. I've seen with a lot of scholarships, what happens is, you know, if you're the top of the class, you know, you got the you know, you got the ribbons and everything. You're the one that gets the scholarship. And I really think we got to look beyond that. So I'll just leave it at that. And my recommendation is you take it back and we'll bring it back and we'll have a discussion on that. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, you take it back and figure it out, Director Vickers. Counselor Bates?
I have one more thought that to just for us to consider for future is if we're doing multiple ones, like if there is five, you might want to consider allowing one of them to be designated by the school principal and teachers, like they know the kids better than, you know, they know who's excelling to the best of their capabilities, things like that. You could have all kinds. So another opening for for thought.
Counselor Mares.
Okay, sorry, Mayor Barkley. I'm just thinking, too, it would be kind of neat if some, if if I guess if there were a number of applicants, not too many, if they came in and gave a presentation on it on why they should be chosen. Anyway, it's out of my realm. Thank you.
Get the scorecards. Counselor Wing, did you have your lights on? No, sorry. Okay, all right. Okay, so I guess we'll just leave leave this for now. And do you want a motion?
To table, please.
Okay, motion, please, to to table this.
Make that motion.
For Director Vickers. Okay, all in favor? Thank you. And thank you again, Director Vickers, for all the work you've done. It's a great start. Okay, we're going to move on to correspondence and information. Want to bring a couple of things to your attention. The the first, the email from Candace Patton, I think some of us were on the carbon capture utilization and storage presentation last week by Enhance Energy. They are looking for a letter of support as they indicated that afternoon and have sent a an example of that. So I'm curious if someone would, he's interested in him making that motion that we give Enhance a a letter of support on their C C U S project.
Mayor Barkley, I'll make that motion. I was lucky enough to be on that presentation, and I definitely support what they're doing. So by all means.
Thank you, Counselor Dunham. And for those who weren't on it. It's a carbon capture project. There's a trunk line that comes down into the Alex area, I believe, right now. And this company is looking to bring it down through central Alberta and store carbon underground. Of course, there's also federal government, I believe, has talked about maybe some carbon capture tax credits and maybe a a solution to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, etc. I think the the idea behind this is that, you know, can help attract industry to to Alberta and and everybody kind of working on that same page for some cleaner cleaner technology, cleaner energy. So if anybody has anything to add to that, that's much more technical than I am, please feel free. Counselor Bates, of course.
Nothing, nothing technical. No, I looked at this the same as I tried to look at our other letter of support that was requested. And I think I was on the and and Counselor Dunham and I were in the same small breakout, not in me, in my case, it wasn't by choice. I just wound up there. And there literally was us and a couple of their folks and the mayor of Caroline.
I guess.
Anyway, they seem to have their technology figured out. They they're currently doing it in Alex. I think they are reaching out to everybody in central Alberta to try and get that support. It's it appears to be another endeavor to try and get government funding, and and they're in competition. And in that vein, I think we should support them for central Alberta.
Yeah. It's actually a letter of support, I believe, to support a they're replying to a request for proposal. So the Alberta government is looking to provide funding for for this project. And so they're they are responding to that and looking for a letter of support from communities for that. Any further questions? Anything? Okay, all in favor? Carried. CEO Becker?
Mayor Barkley to counsel, does the attached sample letter, does that meet your expectations? Worrying, it's kind of the wording to what that represents.
Yeah, it was fine by me. Anybody have any other ideas? But now it seems to be fine. So thank you. And then there's also a letter in here from the Eagles Hockey Club. I spoke with CEO Becker prior to the meeting to kind of bring us up to speed a little bit on some history of where this has been the last few years. And I I believe maybe Director Jenkins is is going to fill us in.
So before we begin, though, I believe I need to declare a conflict of interest. My son is on the board of directors of the Eagles. It's kind of a great, it's it's kind of a fine line, but I, yeah. Yeah. I can recuse myself.
I would say if you feel more comfortable.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Clarity, but probably aside.
It's not really pecuniary interest, but still. All right. Director Jenkins can give us the history.
You bet. So we did discuss during budget time. And the organization at that time had been informed that the the thirty six hundred dollar lease rate would remain in place. But we can go back. So back in twenty seventeen, the original, an original lease was signed between the town and the Eagles Hockey Club for the period of December first, twenty seventeen, through November thirtieth, twenty twenty for a lease fee of three hundred dollars a month. That lease was signed. However, they were never invoiced and money never changed, changed hands through that lease. So that lease did expire last to November, November twenty twenty. With the ice not being in use last year, we didn't pursue renewing the the lease until the spring of twenty twenty one. Although the Eagles have had access to that, to the dressing room, the the entire time period. So we came back in August, September to get a renewed lease in place based on the same same rate that had been proposed in the original lease agreement. That was when they had come back with a request, and we informed them that we would discuss it with counsel during our our budget deliberations, which we did when we provided sort of that table of of all the various leases that that the town has on on various spaces. Following the adoption of the budget, the Eagles were informed that and provided a a draft lease agreement for the period of January first, twenty twenty two through June of twenty twenty three, again, reflecting that three hundred dollars a month. And so we did not receive any reply prior to the end of the year with a signed agreement. The first week or so of the year, they were informed that we would start invoicing at the end of January for the three hundred dollars a month and further requested the signing of the agreement. And now you have the letter before you.
Thank you, Director Jenkins. So I know previous term, we we discussed this quite a bit back at the beginning of the the last lease and certainly lots of data and the data you've brought forward. Director Jenkins indicated that three hundred dollars a month, I think, is quite fair compared to what other communities are are charging. Eagles have exclusive use of this dressing room on top of it, but can open it up for discussion and we need to decide what we're going to do with this. Counselor Harrison?
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. Just a couple of questions. First one being, the dressing room is, does that include an office? What do they put in the dressing room? Do they only use it for games? Or is it a storage room? Like, I've never seen it. I
So it is, it's right on the west end of the lobby of the arena and the town and the Eagles actually partnered to make an addition onto the building. And it consists of a dressing room, an office space, dedicated showers. They have washing machine. They have a skate sharpening machine in there. They have exclusive access to to that space year round. Yeah.
You mentioned in their letter that they've inquired around the region. You mentioned in their letter that they've inquired around the region or within their your sphere of interest, other municipalities have, and I would presume that we did the same thing when we. So it would be interesting to know where they got their numbers from and where.
Yes. So they haven't provided us the research they did. We did do some basic inquiries around the region. For example, the town of Benhold has an agreement with the Red Deer Wrestlers that consists of a minimum of three thousand dollar annual payment for the room as well as a requirement for the team's involvement in community events. Or they can alternately pay an additional seventeen hundred and fifty dollars. The Lacom Generals are a little bit different setup. They pay two dollars per ticket people coming in the door. So they indicate it's an average between two hundred and four hundred dollars per game, which works out to about thirty five hundred to four thousand dollars, depending on how many home games they have in a year. The Camrose Kodiaks are a situation where they paid for the full construction of the room. So they don't actually pay a lease rate. One of the other comparisons that we made when we presented at budget time was the comparison to other leases that the town charges for space. So Innisville Minor Hockey rents an office and a storage room at the arena for thirty six hundred dollars a month. Innisville Skating Club rents a storage room. They pay a thousand dollars a month. And then the concession as well. So.
Sorry, Director Jenkins, a year, a thousand dollars a year. Yep.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Director J.
And I believe at the time, I'll let Counselor Bates go because he has history, like you've been here a while. So he's got history. He knows the history, so.
Yeah, I wasn't going to give a whole lot of history. I think we spent a couple hundred thousand dollars to make that addition. And we probably provide all of the utilities and everything, just what we do with minor hockey, obviously. It is dedicated. They cite the situation that they find themselves in with triple A hockey and as I look at it, I don't know if that's like they're the only triple A hockey team west of Ontario. Literally, which I think they have to look forward at what their business model is going to be and and figure out what they are. And I do believe their their lease is fair. And if they find themselves in a situation where this is necessary to, I don't know whether there'll be Allen Cup this year, but let's assume there is. Perhaps they could make a one time request to the Citizen Standing Committee for Grant or something or whatever in consideration of what they're trying to do this year. But I think they have to look at their business model and and figure out what they're going to be.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Bates. Counselor Highstead.
Yeah, I guess my comment is, is, you know, I and I understood from previous years and I would agree with Gavin. A number, a lot of money has been put into the that facility for the Eagles. I think that, you know, the administration has done a good job giving us the the information. And, you know, in my opinion, I know, you know, I know some of the people that are on the board and and work really hard with Eagles. I think this is consistent in my mind with the the number there. And as to the other arrangements, we didn't get the information. I'm understanding that we're making a decision today. Am I correct? Or is it just for information?
Well, we, we, I would like to see us make a decision today if we're we're able to do that.
All right.
Because we do have a an invoice to go out at the end of January.
Okay, I'm okay with the thirty six hundred as is. And thanks to administration. And if the Eagles want to come and talk to us, you know, about our Counselor Bates's ideas, I think that's that's an opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dunham.
I may read. Maybe next time. Whoops. Oh, my gosh. Without the Eagles providing the information that they got, it there really is nothing for for me to see for them to back it up. And I'm very comfortable with with what you've provided us. So I'm comfortable with thirty six hundred dollars if if they had shown something or given a little bit more information, then maybe I would reevaluate it. But at this point in time, for what the town's already put into it and the costs, etc., I think it's a very fair amount.
Okay, thank you. Is someone prepared to to make a motion then that we will continue, I guess, or start?
Do you need a motion? I mean.
Well, I don't know. What do we have making?
We approve the lease.
Yeah, you already.
This is, this is an ask to have it reduced. I I mean, I'm sympathetic. I'm a fan. I go watch them. I I paid the, they just increased their fees, which they probably need to do. And I paid it happily. I think the lease is fair.
Okay.
And we approved that at budget time. And just to refresh what I just heard. Previously, they haven't been paying the lease at all. So even in in that vein, to me, I mean, we had a last council had a a representation for minor hockey because they had some management issues and they got behind on their payments. And they came to us kind of with hat in hand and asked for a little just a little delay. And then then they ended up coming back and paying it all, I believe. And so I don't think this is unfair. That's just where the way I feel. And we we made the the lease at budget time. And I don't know that we need a motion. Unless you make a motion to refuse the request. CEO Becker, maybe.
I was gonna say a couple of ways you could do it. You could do it through a motion to confirm Council's stance of thirty six hundred dollars, or you can, it's already approved. We can just write a letter to them confirming Council's decision to maintain thirty six hundred. So either way is fine. If you want to run the books, make a motion.
Yeah, I think we should have a motion to confirm that the thirty six hundred dollars per year lease as per previous discussions. Counselor Highstead, did you have something additional?
No, I'll make that motion. I'll make the motion that we continue on with our lease agreement with the Innisville Eagles Hockey Club for thirty six hundred dollars for a twelve month term. Does that work?
Yeah, it's from January twenty twenty two to June twenty twenty three.
Yeah, if we could do eighteen months on on this one, just it's easier to get in touch with them in June than mid season.
Counselor Highstead, did you want to just make a little amendment or or add on the?
Yeah, thirty six hundred dollars for a eighteen month. So is it, because that those numbers change, right? So.
It's January twenty twenty two.
January twenty two.
Twenty twenty three.
At three hundred dollars a month.
There you go.
Then it works.
That's the motion.
Okay, okay, all in favor? Okay, Carrie, just have Counselor Wing come back. Right over. She comes. And then just want to thank Jim Carroll and Heather Taylor for the email, say, of sent you. And also, there's an email from Rob Vander Velden with respect to the Bluebans, which I I think is a really good point. And I'm wondering, I guess, maybe through to Director Jenkins, or is this something that's going to be coming forward to to counsel to review the?
Yeah, so we will be coming forward to counsel with a solid waste update.
Okay.
That we do yearly. At that time, we can provide some information regarding some recycling options what we're looking at moving forward.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, Director Kennedy. Do you know, like, timing wise approximately?
We're just waiting for a proposal in in order to get an idea of recycling options from E three sixty, but it should be sometime in February.
Okay, thank you very much. CEO Becker.
Remember, and we will follow up with the writer to let them know that there's some review going to be conducted by counsel.
Yeah, yeah, no, it was a, but it was a good, good piece of information to receive a request. I think that is, yeah, of course, a very nice thank you letter from the the town of Bowton to thank the the fire department for all their help. Manager Leith and in with the the fire at the hotel down there. So that's very kind. Okay. So I think that's it. Anybody else have anything? Okay, then I'll have a motion, please, that we, you know, we're not going to have a motion, sorry, have to follow the script here. We'll do a round table.
You're right, so remember that motion to accept the correspondence.
Okay, yeah, motion to accept the correspondence.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Bates, all in favor? Okay, and we'll just do the round table. Now we'll start with Counselor Dunham.
Thank you, Mayor Berkeley. Excuse me. So Monday, January seventeenth, we had our AMP council meeting, which was fantastic. And a little bit busier last week for me, which was nice. On Wednesday, the nineteenth, in the afternoon, we had the CCUS in central Alberta afternoon with Enhanced Energy event. I found it to be a really interesting presentation from Enhanced Energy on its origins project. Last fall, while attending an event in Didsbury, we heard mentioned that there may be something coming down the road on carbon capture and that Innisville could play an important part in that, which, you know, sometimes at those events, you just sort of nod and say, thank you and okay. But it was interesting that during the presentation, it was mentioned that Innisville, as long as that Innisville, along with Clive and Big Valley, form a triangle where geological formations under the ground are ideal for carbon capture and could be an make a significant part of the carbon hub. As Counselor Bates mentioned, we both got to go out into the same breakout. And it was nice because there was only five of us in there. So we got a little bit more screen time and the opportunity to ask a few more questions. It was also very interesting to hear the scope of the project and the that they can try if this all goes, if it happens, and the way that they see it happening is that businesses would come here specifically because of the carbon capture credits that they could have, that would offset them by literally, I think they said tens of millions of dollars. So in that, you know, the potential economic benefits to Alberta, particularly our local area. As I said before, that's why I definitely supported the letter. I think it's very interesting and also opened up a little wormhole for me to to go down and read some more on it. Also, on Wednesday, the nineteenth, we had the Alberta municipalities presentation on the APPS. That was an eye opener. It's the first of several engagements that we get the opportunity to attend on the proposed Alberta Police Provincial Police Service. The Alberta municipalities provide analysis of the PWC report. And then there was a presentation from several individuals with the Alberta municipalities. Once again, we had breakout groups for further discussion for people to bring forward questions and concerns. The breakout session I was in, there was a huge lack of confidence in the government Alberta's report. It was, I mean, I think there was three hundred and eighty odd individuals on that. In our group, there were seventy five. I got kicked out a few times, but the one thing that stood out for me was the major concerns from across the province on just the basic feasibility of costs of replacing the RCP with potential police service. So that was last week and I look forward to this coming week. We've got some more interesting engagements.
Thank you, Counselor Dunham and Counselor Wing.
Thank you, Mayor Berkeley. I just wanted to just take this time to highlight two organizations that I've that I've been appointed to boards, to their boards. And the work that they've been doing in in our community, especially in the last two years, which has been extremely difficult for them. So the over the last two years, the Innisville Public Library has been creating and delivering programs to families and citizens, I think, in a way that has gone above and beyond. Even when you consider their excellent service from before, in the meetings that I've been attending, and I was with them in a meeting last week, I've become aware of such things as storytime kits that include stories and activities to be done at home and in the community, day home kits where day home providers can pick up supplies and activities for their the children they care for and then do those crafts and then end with a Zoom story session from the library. Family Literacy Day is coming up. There'll be some great activities in partnership with the Hyundai Association for Lifelong Learning. They make snow globe kits and tea blending kits for people for stressed adults. I just, I just have been so impressed with a very actually understaffed, diligent group of of staff and volunteers at the library. They just continue to amaze me. Plus, there's an ever increasing inventory of new books. So I would highly encourage you to get over there and take a look at what they have. We did not include the library board in our recent budget deliberations. That has been a past practice. They've come in and made presentations. So I would like us to consider inviting them to a meeting in the future and having them share some of their activities and give them some thanks for the work that they've been doing. And then as well, I've been appointed to the chamber board. And let me tell you, the chamber is really working hard right now, trying to find that balance between an active board and some strategic planning activities as well as planning and delivering some major events. The trade fair, yay, will happen. First weekend of April, the open registrations today for businesses, they were pleasantly pleasantly surprised. There are a few businesses they expected that they have heard from that have said, no, because of the R E P or because of just reduce reductions in staff, they won't be participating. But so far, we're looking like we're going to be able to get things moving forward. They have a sponsor for the barbecue on the Friday evening already lined up. So stay tuned. Stay tuned for the details. If I would encourage you to encourage local businesses and organizations to participate. And then I hope that counsel can attend as well, please. So I believe the town usually has a booth at the trade fair. But anyway, that's coming up. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Wing. And I like the idea about the library coming to present. It's always my favorite part of budget, actually, was the library coming in. They do such an extensive presentation. And you get to see the all their programming and the numbers that go through there. So it's it's always really an eye opener. So thank you for that. And Counselor Bates.
Okay, so last week I attended the Mountain B Regional Water Commission presentation, as did my backup Counselor Harrison. They had a presentation from Brownlee on the role of commission people versus council people. And I know because everyone here is so bored and not nothing to read, I will forward you all with the slides that you could look at and kind of get a bit of a feeling, some of the role differences. You will see a couple of them. I guess there's some cut and paste involved with the lawyers, too, because they mentioned the regional waste system. So I think perhaps they were using some of the same slides for the for the Waste Commission. Anyway, I will provide you with that. I intended the Enhanced Energy thing. And the Alberta Police discussion with Alberta municipalities. It causes me to wonder, I know we all got kind of engaged last week with some, with us trying to get enrolled into specifically the government side of it. The one thing that I picked up from Alberta municipalities is this can be for our police committee as well. And and I'm wondering if we've figured out whether or not we could get our police committee into the government portion of the Zoom or whatever. So it's not not looking for an answer rate this minute. But when we get to this upcoming event, maybe that'll be a discussion. And looking forward to losing my optional Monday off next week by engaging with Pimple. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bates. And I know there's been some discussion about maybe, I guess, okay to say, the the chair and vice chair participating in in police discussions from the the Police and Safe Community Committee.
I I guess my point was, if it's, if it is a Zoom, like, that we're going to get to, because I think we've run out of spaces.
Yeah.
And and if the other committee members wanted to listen, that sure wouldn't hurt them, because they're going to hear a lot of what I'm hearing around town, I I'm running into the odd person who's uninformed that is taking this as an affront against the federal government. And they're jumping all over the fact that we should replace the RCMP because that way we're sticking it to the feds. And I I think the more people can get informed and understand what's going on, the more the better it'll be, but.
Yeah, I also think, you know, as this evolves, we can send out communication from the community, as President Heron said the other night on the call, it's up to us to be sharing information that's coming out from Alberta municipalities as well. And I think it's a very good point, Counselor Bates, that people don't necessarily know how funding works with with the RCMP and and just the scope of that organization. I think it's a very good point, Counselor Bates, that people don't necessarily know how funding works with with the RCMP and and just the scope of that organization and. And uh, potential costs that are coming down the the pipe, I I think uh, was kind of looked upon potentially. Chair and Vice Prayer Chair, because really, I mean, that this dialogue's going to be more around the the council table and for us to advocate for. Whatever we decide going forward, once we get all the information from both sides, but um, really valid points for sure. And Counselor Highstead?
Thanks, your worship, um, last week, I was to attend age friendly, but uh, the meeting was canceled, so the meeting's gonna happen this week. Unfortunately, I can't attend, so my colleague Dawn Harrison, Counselor Dawn Harrison's gonna fill in uh, my role. Uh, just some of the things that I do want to comment on, um, I know that I did bring up. Uh, I think it was the last round table on the treaty acknowledgement piece. And um, what I would like to see us, um, you know, maybe in our administrative meeting i- is have a discussion on that and. And why I brought for that request, so I was just wondering if I could, I could do that at our eh eh next A U. Eh, another thing that I've noticed, just driving around town, and maybe it's just in the area where I live is. Um, some of the crosswalks, like, we got a lot of on, like, if I'm walking on Fiftieth Street and Sixtieth Ave. Um, there's a number of crosswalks going to um, uh, Sentinel Park as well as. Leading that area, Sixtieth Ave, and it's, it's not really well lit, and I'm surprised nobody's been run over lately, especially. In the winter time, um, so, and that's another reason why I'm I've, you know, I'm advocating in at the next AU meeting that we talk about. Uh, lighting in some of our paths, um, another item, uh, recycling bins, I I think that's a really good one, that one came up to me. Couple weeks ago, so I want to thank administration working on that in the future. Uh, we talked about flags and this one really is a, is an awkward one, I think. Uh, people are allowed to display their own flags and stuff, but there's the the odd inappropriate flag that's. On some, you know, vehicles and stuff like that. I think that in our own municipality where we have people coming into our community and you got some flag that's saying F you, whoever. On it, I'm not gonna say the individual's name, but I think it's, I don't know where it crossed the line for us to. Maybe address it, or it's totally inappropriate, it it represents Innisville and people are in our town. And you you see stuff like that, and I think that's, you know, that's something that we may want to talk about, but as to the. Policing Town Hall or the the Town Halls that are gonna take place, I'm not gonna speak for uh, Counselor Maseros, but. Uh, I'm certain that we both agree that we'd want to make sure the policing committee is involved in that. But maybe there's a Town Hall that we can have or hold where we actually advise the citizens, I think that's. Our leadership role is to to have a a component where we can lead this. On the policing side and actually bring in uh, guest speakers to ask actually what the dialogue is, because it's not. Uh, you know, what's being presented to us, uh, is not a good uh, fit for our community and um. As to housing and stuff like that, um. I know that we're gonna be talking a lot about housing in the near future, but I went on a tour of a. Um, at Al- Alta Fab a couple of weeks ago, and they actually have a bit of a social housing component to what they can build. And I mentioned this before, Atco has done some work with the the veterans in the city of Calgary. And maybe in some of our developments, we look at some type of uh, housing, we talk about affordable housing, but I think there's different versions of that. And what we all mean in affordable housing, so I think there's an opportunity for us to have further discussion. On affordable housing and and what it means and how can we help individuals um, working with. You know, groups like McMahon and and social services and different departments like that, so. That's my long-winded update, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Harrison.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Barkley, uh, I also attended the orientation for uh, the Water Commission and. That's really great, the Counselor Bates is gonna circulate the slides, because I think it's really important that. That you know the difference between council duties when you sit at that commission table, it's it's completely different, you're there to represent the commission, not council. And it's a, it it's a very fine line, so. Um, I did attend what I could have of the policing Zoom. I was one of those that got kicked out many times, so I got frustrated and shut my computer off, I knew that there was other counselors that were on the call. That we'd get a good briefing. Um, so, uh, that's uh, coming up uh, next Monday, looking forward to engaging with the town of uh, Penhol. And uh, looking forward to the county, when whenever we can sort of frame that up to a, looking forward to that, so. Uh, with that, I I yield the remainder of my time to my colleague. Counselor Maseros.
Thank you, Counselor Harrison, Mayor Barkley, I was at the NP meeting last last week and. Also at the Carbon Capture uh, meeting with Enhance and um. I thought there were some really good questions that came up at that meeting that really, there wasn't really very much of a deep dive after that. And I feel like there are some really valid questions that came up that I would like to kind of know more about. Um, in fact, our C O brought up a very good question, I thought, and it was um, about, I don't know if this was his words exactly, but it was kind of about. What's good, is there any risk to the stability of the um, geography to the earth and uh. Um, kind of the this, the safety and the stability and the health of what happens with the carbon capture. And I think that that's an important question, and I I think that we heard the business case for that project, but I don't think that we really had. You know, some of the other questions answered, um. And so, yeah, so that's kind of what I want to talk about with that, and then I went to the, also to the um, Alberta Provincial Police Force. Uh, meeting, and I thought they, uh, there's still some really big questions, and I think the two biggest questions are about funding and about. Um, systems communications, um, and uh, kept uh, President Heron was on CBC this morning, she had a good segment on that. Related to um, this uh, conversation and uh, that was, that was great. Next week is not very heavy, but the week after is, so I'm glad that we have a bit of a chance to rest up for that, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Maseros, and um. Like most of you, I attended the enhanced presentation as well as um, the Alberta municipalities' APPS. Presentation, um, you can Google the the Price Waterhouse Cooper's. Report that that has come out from uh, for the Alberta government, it's about a hundred pages, but lots of large pictures in it, so it's, it's not too bad. And um, yeah, there'll be lots of discussion with that going forward, I I know in that the previous council term, we we did send a letter of support for the RCMP to the Justice Minister. And as did many, many, many other communities, so I I think uh, there were some feedback, a lot of feedback last term that. Communities had not been um, well. Um, hadn't been talked to enough about the the subject matter, and um, I think that's now why we're we're seeing this taking place, so. I think as we go forward and, you know, keep an open mind, we we need to listen to both sides, but um, you know, for sure, it's, I I don't know how it could. Cost any less, that that's for sure than what it is right now, considering thirty percent of our funding comes from the federal government. As I said, I I did attend the South Regional Mayor's Group in Sundry last week, um, talked about a few things, of course, the the train presentation was one, the RCMP. We're going to discuss that uh, going forward at a future meeting as well as um, the hospital discussion came up. As far as, you know, protecting hospitals and in our communities and um, its brain olds have both received some funding from H S for. Hospital renovations, but they're not really in the loop as to what that is for, and so I'm trying to open up better dialogue. Around that, so it it it's a good group of people and it's good to hear what everybody else is doing, we went around to hear um, all the communities that were there that day, what they're doing. With respect to facilities and COVID, um, Bowton had just changed course, uh, they're now on one third capacity as opposed to R E P. But uh, the others were, I I think, still pretty much the same, so I old says full R R E P. Example, so, anyway, it's good, uh, we're going to have um, the meeting in May, it's going to be held in Innisville and looking forward to that. And there'll be another one in Sundry, I believe it's in March. So um, I think other than that, that's about it, and um, I think now we will have a motion to. Look at upcoming events and a motion to accept this as correspondence, please.
Can I ask a question about the February seventh, oh, is this a? Is that the next meeting, is this the one for the group of us that weren't able to go this week?
This is the one, um, I believe CEO Becker and and got into it and Kara was registering us and. She started and it stopped after my name went in, it was full, so the the rest has to be done virtually. And I, right? Yeah, yeah.
So do we have information about the 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 virtual?
Yes, Kara Kara said that out, I believe Kara said that out last week via email.
I I did send a meeting request to the participants that had given me their names to. Be in on that for March fourteenth, eight thirty to eleven A M.
Mayor Barkley, um, two things for for clarification on that one, before we lose it, so. The people that are going to the February seventh. If if we got the invitation to the March fourteenth, we're not on February the seventh, that is that a fair statement? Or could we just list who's going to which?
No, that that is correct, so.
So I'm.
Meeting invite was sent to Mayor Barkley and CEO Becker for February seventh. And then.
The rest of us are on the Zoom.
The rest of the members are for March fourteenth, which I sent a meeting request to those members of council.
And then, my other, I think we missed the open mic. At the end of the round table. I don't know, is anybody on Zoom, I have no idea. Just bringing it up.
I believe, Carrie, you also tried, was it the seventh or ninth or something for Olds on the uh. On the APPS engage, I can't remember anymore, there was so many things flying around, but.
So there was also um, another meeting request sent for uh, the. Keep Alberta RCMP engagement in Olds for February second.
Yeah.
And that was sent to those who responded with, please register me for that. So those members received a meeting request for February second at two P M in Olds. And then I did try for the A P P. Um, for Red Deer and then Olds for February tenth, and both were sold out, so that's why we went to March fourteenth. For the virtual meeting.
Okay, thank you, and if anybody hasn't registered for virtual or want to, or the the February second date in Olds, please just uh, get ahold of Karen. And uh, she will look after that. So could we have a motion to accept this as information, please?
Mayor Barkley, I would make that motion.
Kate, thank you, Counselor Wing. And does anyone online, Kara, that would like to speak?
If there's anyone online that would like to speak at open mic, can you please raise your hand and I'll unmute you?
Thank you for the reminder, Counselor Bates, I tend to forget about the online participants. No, okay, all right, thank you, then, uh, I will have a, uh, someone make a motion then, please, that we can go in camera.
Mayor Barkley, I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Dunham, all in favor, thank you, and we'll just take a five minute break and uh, reconvene.